They got engaged for a period?
No.
He was there for the month of August for years. And now he's gone.
Right.
Yeah. Right, well, he's a firefighter, so.
From under the trees.
Well, I will say, it's not like.
Let's go ahead and blow us meeting the words. Welcome, everybody. And we'll start it off with.
In the precious name of God, I thank you for your stay in this solitude to be together, to disseminate the business of this city. And Father, we just thank you for all your many blessings. Amen.
But I just to fly. We know this is a better. You should know, Father, that this is a stance of my nation. And I love it. And this is what I think we need to do.
Okay, folks, we've got community comments up first. Let's go in line here. We got Rick Cool first. So, Rick, will you just do me a favor and just check to make sure that my tone when you get it there?
Okay. Is it on? I just wanted to make a couple of comments. My wife and I came up here tonight. And the first thing I want to say is, thank you, guys. Over the past few years, the City Council has done so much to make the village an outstanding place to live. And we've been blessed to have you guys as our governing bodies, and I want to thank you for that. The second thing is, it's kind of sad, Kevin, present that we're losing Sonny and Sean because those two guys are outstanding representatives on the City Council and represent people who've done so much for our community. We are truly going to miss you guys, and thanks for all that you do. So, just wanted to let you guys know. Have a good day.
And Sonny is going to conveniently miss his last meeting. So, if any of you want to.
This is your job.
Okay. Have a good day. You're up.
Okay, hey, guys, I've got some library updates for you. So, Mr. Rogers' birthday is coming up. And so, we have a Wonky D My Neighbor Kids program coming up on March 20th from 2:00 to 3:00. We have a escape room series, Escape the Nineties, for teens on March 22nd. So, there'll be a session at 1:30 and 2:45. And then we're doing an all-ages doodle night on March 25th from 6:30 to 7:00. Very. And then just some fun facts. Teen volunteers, we're starting to look for teen volunteers for the summer reading program. So, if you know any teens that need volunteer hours, anything for school, need the clubs, send them our way. And then our last one is, we have two in library use only Chromebooks that guests can use while they're in the library. And if they need it for a virtual meeting or an interview, they're able to use that while on the library. Awesome, thank you.
Awesome, thank you very much.
Two, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, Charlie Rood.
Good to meet you guys. I wanted to comment on parks. I think you guys have done an outstanding job with parks. Especially I was at the exercise stuff today looking at that stuff. How do we keep that in better shape in the future if we're going to have events in there? Do we have like a municipal field, someplace we can have events that we can get purpose for rather than, you know, have it in that area?
In terms of workout area?
Yeah, out there by the library and everything. I mean, it's real nice. It's, I don't know how long that's going to last like that. I mean, I'm sure by last night, saw some kids jumping up and down on it. So, I don't know. Do you guys have a, is there a way forward of that? How do you plan on keeping that in pristine shape?
I'd like, not on the maintenance side of things, but just on the tactile side of things. I touch that equipment. That stuff is almost indescribable. Have you been over there?
Yeah.
Because it really feels like.
Like always. Oh, it does. I was just like.
It's serious.
If we have events there, is that going to destroy it, do you think?
There's something over here next door.
Or on the deal next to the library.
Can't imagine any good time for the exercise, but we will have yoga there and time she is, stuff like that.
Yeah.
Because she's going to carry her arm.
Do they have a large field in the city that, that they can do events at at all? Like I could do large use and stuff like that. Or some can bring something in, do some sort of events there.
Sure. I mean, all of the parks are available. Yeah. You can rent any park. You can have this space over here. That's why we want this.
Okay.
As we proved, you can get a lot of people in there.
Yeah, true.
Dumpy does have a much larger.
And the second. And the second thing I wanted to talk about was that people were talking about speeders in the village and such. They only have one motorcycle unit, one I was just talking to Chief. How do we fund the police department to get an additional motorcycle unit? Radar, et cetera, et cetera.
Chief, you want to, you want to tell us what you do?
Well, I certainly say that we're responsive to all complaints. We can help if we can get specific locations, dates, times, vehicle descriptions. Not only is our motorcycle extremely active.
Yeah.
But our patrol officers too are involved almost daily. You know, on these tracks. So, if you have, it sounds like the library, we're on 10, 100 block of town or so, we can certainly.
Just call the non-emergency line and say yada, yada, yada.
Sure, meet with us after the meeting and we'll do it for you.
I try to go like this.
Yeah, we're happy to help and we take it serious.
Still watching for somebody out there. If they have any resources, they can come to us. Try to find them.
All right, thank you. So, just so you know, budgeting is done right after the new council starts in May. It's approved. So, he's got to have money.
I started, you started.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Shut it down, we're not the apartment. No, we thank you for what you're doing. We don't have anybody calling on us this year. So, we're going to, the events are going to start okay. Kara, it's Hannah Walz.
Hello, I'm Kara Tenwald, and we are having an Easter egg hunt on the Saturday of Fourth Easter. So, that is March 11th. We are doing it at Bumwood Park this year because that part is getting a little vague over. And we, everybody in the community, friends of the community, everybody that's nice is welcome to come. I did it last year, everybody was great.
And it goes really fast.
It's fast, it's fast.
Everybody shows up, it's done, and it's over.
So, we are doing that, setting up a collection in City Hall. If anybody wants to drop off donated, you know, Easter eggs. Eggs and filler, or just eggs. Whatever you want to donate. And I have a couple of Easter egg captains taking care of it for me this year while I am campaigning for the council. So, if you guys have any questions or want to volunteer to help the day, um, just get with me, I'll help you out.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you very much. All right, that's all of our citizens. Let's move on to number four, approve of consent agenda.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Sonny, second one, Billy, Billy.
I'm.
Sean.
I am.
Sonny.
I am.
Close you pass it through.
Okay, if I need to do planning, it's a well separate.
No.
Moving on. Presentation from Brett Scoville regarding the creation of a community arts council for the village, which the local was greater.
Okay, thanks. I just made that up on my own. I'm a truck driver, so it's true. It's cheap. I didn't want to come down here and be presumptuous, and I really haven't started anything other than planting seeds in the community for this. And I'm assuming that everybody's read that. I've been around, I don't want to sound banging, but I've been around special events for 40 years. And I saw this beautiful park, and I thought, let's get something going. And it wasn't until Saturday that I posted something on the village's page on Facebook. And wow, I got a great response. It was, not only did I get about 101 people respond, but I ended up with about 10 volunteers. And some of them with some practical experience. I didn't want to make assumptions about the library without talking about everybody else. But I didn't want to do that until I got a full blessing to move forward with this. I'm not going to read my credentials. I assume you've already done that. Been around. I wasn't going to start this until July, but I think this group of people is going to push me on hard. I wanted to tell you that my area of expertise is in the logistical behind the scenes side. When we want to do an event, we always go, oh, we have rainbows. And we, we, we have to have portable restrooms, we have to have power, we have to have insurance. We have to have all of those, the trash collection and all those things. Before I even came down here, trash being was important because that's where I come from. Wastey Nakes, he said, in kind, don't worry about a thing, and it has covered. And then going forward, they have, they're going to donate funds to help us get started. I have to get, I have to raise some money. And I'm going to figure out a way to do that. There's, I have a lead into our wonderful neighbors that love corporation that I haven't spoken to yet. And I could use some help too, if I know anybody. And I have a, of course, Wastey Nakes, a testament, give me a dollar amount, but they're going to be, I think it's going to be considerable. And I would ask that, I'm going to crescendo this thing unless y'all won't let me. But I'm going to, I thought we need to start slow with some events at the library, similar to what you were talking about previously. And kind of crescendo up to, in about 18 months, an art festival, a food festival, and perhaps a farmer's market. And I want to, and I'm talking about just embracing this wonderful park with the entire community, everybody in the community. We can move this thing around. I don't want my fingerprints all over it. I want the fingerprints of the entire community on this thing, and we can shift this thing around, move around, whatever anybody wants to do. But I thought we could establish a legacy of arts and, and keep it a little. We, it's not going to be a format for campaigns or anything like that. It's just going to be arts and, and whatever form it has to be. I'm surprised at how many people came forward. A guy, former associate in line with the DDQ, does a little Woody Guthrie tribute that he does all over the state. He volunteered. Then the other man that plays around town that lives here named Wayne Cockwell volunteered to do one of the little library sessions. And I thought they'd be little two-door, two-hour outdoor things, that kind of stuff. And I'll get, with Manny over at the coffee shop in Tasty Square said, volunteered, said, I want to host a meeting. So, we have a good start here. I would just ask first a few concessions upfront from the city. Maybe for the first six months or so, if we could, if you could help me on the theme side, even bar, help me a little bit. And then maybe create, get a liaison with somebody here that I can figure out the power access and those kind of things. And get that all worked out in advance before we step off into the bigger events and get lost, you know? I'll have all that stuff up front. That's really just about it. Unless, yeah, I'm prepared to answer the most difficult questions. I do have a lot of experience in special events and some tough outs. We used to do it back in the day, about a million people, it was fair enough for home. So, I've been clobbered a few times. I know that it can be a task, and I know it can be a little bit of work. But if you have, if you go into the thing with the right attitude and have a lot of fun, you can really provide a format for everybody in the community. If they want to come up and put their little pop band up there, or they want to put their artwork up there, or they want to do children's reading hours and those kind of, those kind of things, we're going to provide a tent for that. One other thing that I did very little research on today, I found that the Oklahoma Art, and this was a dated thing that I saw on, like, Oklahoma Arts Council will match funds up to $5,000 twice a year if I can raise $5,000. So, I'm working on those sponsors. I've only knocked on one door in the village. And I, that was frankly in the village, and they're very, they want support, they're very much thankful of what we're doing. We really have a lot of time, and Don't Hank, it's taken pretty busy up there. But I just want to see what kind of response I got from a business owner in the village. So, once we get our old brick together, we'll go knocking on doors and just, just try to get grassroots movement going. I am welcoming any help or any advice. I'm not going to, I don't have a preconceived notion of how, what this will look like. I'm just trying to get plenty to see. That's all I'm trying to do. So, with your blessing, I'm going to forge ahead. Yes.
I don't necessarily, I guess if my dear question, are you, is the projection for discount review or something like that?
I think for the bigger event, I'd rather that we got some experience with the smaller venue items such as the library and kind of give us, the team that's going to be in charge of this thing, a template to, you know, this is how we're going to do it. Establish some roles, like, somebody's going to have to be the social media person to get the word out and advertise. Somebody's going to have to solicit the artists and give them the establishment. So, we, what I want to do upfront is establish some roles and some responsibilities. And then I'm going to do the background ugly stuff. And I thought that would give them a break. Again, I don't necessarily want it to look like me. I'd rather it look like us. And that's, I don't have any preconceived notions on Google, just to get this through. But that's really the, the larger event, I think we put at the backside. We want to have an 18-month business plan to begin. Unless my team that I put together wants to be more aggressive with that and feels confident enough to do that, confident enough to do that. I can put the infrastructure together with a little help from you in regard to power and those kind of things. I can see it. I have a vision for it. I know what I want it to look like. But I also want to, I'm jaded. And I live right there on the park, you know, my house is right near the park. So, I want to make sure that this doesn't look like me 100% like me, that I'm a community project. So, I'm going to, oh, gosh, I'm retiring in July, and I'm going to wait till July. And I've been in that direction. So, I'm going to talk to Maddie, and I don't know if Maggie's here, but I'm going to talk to Maddie, and I'll get a meeting going within next week or so. And just kind of see where we're at. And I'll talk to Dave and going forward and see if I can help I can get on infrastructure. I, I don't know if you know this, but, gosh, however many years ago, I was the one that set up the current solid waste system for the city of the village. And I think they're still using my old routes. In fact, I thought I spotted my math. But I, I, we did a ride back then, and I think it's pretty much still hold water that. So, I, I'm part of this, I'm part of this community, and I, we love this community. We moved here on purpose. And, and just want to see if we can give something back, come up with something back. So, that's really all it means.
Brett, one, or two things to tell you. One, it makes me so happy to see you wanting to do this, people doing it. That's parts recently built this area and saving group organically coming together now. I wanted to see that for years. So, I'm proud to hear that, I know your background. Those of you that don't know, I worked in local beautiful for a number of years. This guy's a big deal. I mean, he's a lifetime, he's been a board runner around the state, and that's not like they give him an award. And so, you do know what you're doing, what you're talking about, incredible resource to the city. So, I fully trust you just based off that alone. I know you, I know you do well.
We, we don't do those things by ourselves.
No. Takes a village. No, it's, but you know, like, you've got something between your ears. Then the two, the two funds, right, of the Communities Foundation, is still there?
I've talked to him. There's also a visitor with Walmart manager two weeks ago. Walmart had created for community purposes that they really want to do some of what they have done.
What I was going to say, that fund with the Communities Foundation, I can't recall where you set it up. I thought there was one from the Parks and Community Events and another one for the, for the gambling shelter. But the reason I'm saying that is it's definitely a work for you to get solicitations in from loves or whoever, Walmart, because the Communities Foundation can accept it on behalf of the group, of the city. I've been given access to those funds.
Okay.
So, if you can figure that out, that would be helpful if you're going to get that question. And if you can say, yeah, we set it up, and they get their tax write-off, and I get to give you the money.
That was part of my worries with the final world three CD status and, and how we got that going. I'm going to tell you off, off the top of my head, to get us through that first event, I was going to come up with about $8,000, okay? Buy a little sound system for the library and, and, you know, nothing fancy. Can't afford anything fancy, but something to get started. And then, once we establish the art festival, you know, we can sell the spaces. And then I'll have to work, we will have to work very closely with you to figure out how to collect that sales tax. And that's, that's perfect.
Huh?
Better perks.
Yeah.
Little silver.
Yeah.
They'll come up with that, right?
That sounds like a great job for a community event director.
So, yes, it's.
Amen.
And Brett, I know you're not, or you're not retired until July, but as soon as this campaign's over, I, I'm there to help you.
Thank you very much.
I have.
You were the first one to jump in.
Yeah, I have people already that are local musicians that, you know, I mean, there's so many people in the village that do so much, like, you don't.
Yeah. I'm fine with that.
Yeah, you don't, I didn't realize how many until I started knocking on doors. We have artists and actors. There's a woman that lives on Ridgeview that ran a whole theater company. You know?
I thought about Shakespeare in the Park, the vignettes.
My husband's an author, you know? So, I, I'm on board 100%. I love it, and I'll help you know one more.
I really, the enthusiasm is way beyond what I expected. So, I really appreciate it. Yes, sir.
Do you have, do you have a way to contact you, Brett?
I do. Right now, the best thing is villageartsokay@gmail.com. And I have some little cards here if you want to write your name on there and get them back to me.
My question, though, I did have, since you live right on the park, you know, is there going to be any kind of concerns from those directly there for any kind of noise or, do you think there's going to be any?
Well, Mr. Pula will take care of those.
Oh, okay, okay. So, we're good, taking care of that. I like that.
I'm kidding, but probably you're going to get a complaint. And it's the municipal, I work for the municipal government, I know how the government, you're going to get.
Yeah.
You're going to get a percentage, but will it be measurable? I don't think, I don't.
I love it.
And lastly, when we get into this event, I'm not going to think small. I'm going to think that day here, so we might be blocks free. So, before you add a point, or half of it.
My dad's a little drunk, Carol, he might be asking that question.
I don't like that, I think we're going to die when we say it, Chris.
And we'll get a, we'll get a social media person going and get a website so you can register. Artists can, we'll have all that. It'll take us a little while, but we'll get places where artists can register, volunteers can register, the whole thing, you know? And I found that in these endeavors, people aren't in it for the free t-shirt. They're there because they really want help, and that's what makes it fun. So, I'm looking forward to it.
Okay, I'm the number six presentation from Public Finance Law Group and Musical Finance Services, Inc. Regarding a company sale of general obligation bonds. No one has a key.
Follow that. I don't have quite as much off. I'm just willing to answer this, so you can perhaps keep on doing this. Tonight, we're doing, setting the sale for the second half of the election authorization that you guys did back in 2022. This is essentially kind of a mirror image of the bonds that we sold two years ago. It's for the same amount, for the same purposes, the same breakdown, 4 million, 950 per street, and then 650 for parks and recreational spaces. Right now, we're setting the sale date for April 8th. So, it'll be your Monday evening, and we will take a biz at our office that morning. We're moving ahead for the tabulation, we have World War bids, and we're shooting for closing May 21st. Tended, but that's, that's kind of the layout, that's the schedule, stands. Same terms as last time, for the 25-year issue. And just by circumstance, the rates where they are today are generally where they were two years ago. So, those are.
What do you guess, though?
So, they're, they're a little, they're a little higher. Usually I write them a rate chart to show them, but it's, it's right, right where it was, it's about five or six points higher today. Who knows where they'll be on the roll, but. Barring unfortunate events, we will kind of be in the second annual house, which means essentially the same levy you have as the deposit issued two years ago.
Awesome. You guys have done a great job of this. Now let us know.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
All right, I'm the number eight, Consider Take Action.
Yeah.
Oh. Consideration of official statement, sale of geobonds, amount of 6.6 million.
This is, this is actually more Chris's item than actually the resolution that you have in IMA. Actually approves in form of preliminary official statement. So, if you have any questions about the document, that's kind of the, that's the prospectus document that goes out to potential investors in the market when they, when they put it out for bids here in the month. So, if you have any questions on that, either one of us can answer, otherwise they can take action on Saturday. I was wrapped in it.
That's why I'm turning it.
Do we have any questions?
Just so that I understand, these are all in the same, even though they're being discussed separately?
Yes, ma'am, I listed them separately because the preliminary official statement requires the signature of the governor, the mayor, the vice mayor, and a testimony on the city court. So, even though it was covered, it wasn't separate document. I don't see the need to be an actor on the one, but it's all good. I'm just trying to play the role of the judge.
Thank you.
Either way, for general, you want to get some.
Okay, thanks, Terry. All right, Consider Take Action, which means vote with respect to your resolution 311 2024A, fixing the amount of combined purposes of the geobonds series 2024 to ensure each year, fixing the time and place the bonds were sold, designating a paying agent, registrar, and disclosure council, approving the preliminary official statement and distribution.
There's a sentence on, I am, I am honored, therefore, be honest, ready, authorizing a city clerk to give notice of said sale required by law, fixing other details for the issue.
I didn't introduce myself for the record. My name is Nate Ellis, I'm with the Public Finance Law Group, where your bond council. Again, this is the first formal action that actually sets the sale date, puts everything in motion. We'll be back April 8th with additional documents and items to be approved. It'll have the actual sale in terms of the bonds to be finalized.
I just wanted to buy that two things for a quick, if I can. Mr. Collins, sorry, I was going to put back here. I just think it's always different now. That of this 4.95 million streets. And so, I was right, it's a street. And 1.65 million are parks, recreational spaces.
Put them together.
Put them together, and 73% of the owners are. Outstanding. So, I'm just saying for those. So, and then the discussion. Questions? I'm looking for the portion that I have to approve, President zero three eleven twenty twenty four A.
Second.
Motion by Sonny, sent by Melody, I'm called Royal Melody.
Aye.
Sean.
Yay.
Sonny.
Yay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Okay, reports, try to report.
We're gonna keep in the spirit of the experience, the good record. Beverly visited the Department of Treasury compliance last week, so obviously, Monday through Friday, financial information already, we'll get them out to you whenever they are. Management report, I was actually up there, not basic present, but in a shot of a few minutes now. We are, have started our budget process, we'll be looking at a budget workshop, they kind of get something out to you on that. Started our collective bargaining agreements with the fire and police locals. I'd like to say there's gotta be a lot more work getting all the lawn stuff prepped, that was really. And for us, we should be getting ready to do, get, we'll have our own maintenance bids specifications out for including law help, so greatly needed maintenance bids to the city plaza area, so we're anticipating that cost to be high. But once last year, we were looking at someone to be a bit more responsive than what we've had. Currently, it was leadership training, both the chief and the deputy chief are both involved in the law enforcement leadership program with COME. Kevin Reber is doing other one with COME. Beverly received a scholarship from the conference one last week to attend the Association of Public Treasurers of the United States and Canada for a conference in Freeville, South Carolina, and Hauntz, and we're happy to have them there. Law help parks, I think, just set up by Melody Ford here, so it ended up, it was a group along well, both Duffner and Wayne Schooly. And Duffner was slowed down by the weather, but they are back on track. From the twenty twenty two bonds, we've completed the streets project on the ground, the sidewalk links, we just got back last week a hundred percent. And I think we're really going to, once these bonds sell, we have all the sidewalks set down, the streets, and drains together, and we're programming our lots of new six sub projects, do one large projects, and we track them better. Already started talking a lot a little bit about the new park design and engineering for the other four parks. We are working with the University of Central Oklahoma, with some of their GPA students. It's just some future forward thinking on turning the Village Drive into one-way and putting pedestrian and cycle access through there, which would connect everything we have up here to Britain Road that gets us to Lake Etna, and we're trying to do websites in the future, but we were selected as a project, so we'll get some that, we can put on that. Elder, the governor's wife gave birth to a wonderful baby boy last week, came about eight days early. Elder's also the assistant animal patrol officer, and our animal patrol officer Tyler Leese was an animal patrol officer attorney. So we've done the good, the shelters apparently full, Nickel's sales often helped us out if we needed it, I think we made them through there, and.
They don't like to remind you of your contracts, that's other duties aside.
I think it's a net, these policies.
And we've had some discussions and appreciate a lot of feedback we've gotten from the community on good remembrance or an honor for Kathy. And I think we'll probably bring that back, and they will think that's not to think we can do it right, not right now. One thing that we did notice was on Big Blue Boulevard from Penn up to Manchester, there's only one address assigned. That is Tom and Judy, loves the bank center, so we started working gloves to see how late the inconvenience that would be for them to change their street address. Can't speak for them, but it doesn't seem like that's gonna be a big problem, because everyone knows where it's at, so. And that could be somebody who's using Kathy, coming to Boulevard, just everything with a heart, which she was so inspiring on, we all tie together on that street. So let's just throw that out there, it could be something that we'll get, we'll plan to get some more feedback, and if people think, we'll probably bring that back. I told you to make it quick, I already talked to them all, but they should be sure.
All right, councilman Cummins.
Do we have department report?
Yeah, in the department.
Man, I like the way.
I feel I'm in a hurry, but we're almost at seven o'clock.
Yeah. So Public Works is tracking a business, ready to start, something pretty gone. Code as well is looking forward to, they want to save time, keeps fixing out of school, everybody's selling at the same time, and someone like Gato lived in the dogs room. So they're gearing up for that for the week patrol season. If you see they have a fire department command vehicles driving around lately, now I don't want to go off the village. Some people that they like supported it totally, and now the chief and deputy chief, you can tell them they're coming. In the answer report, seventy-seven transports in February, average response time of ten minutes and forty-three seconds. That includes emergency and non-emergency responses, they'll break it down similar to that. Our partner put up a picture in with it, too. David Rice, who was a major, been selected as the next deputy fire chief, he was sitting in his role two weeks ago, starting on that. Juan Torres has made it through his rookie year, he's officially firefighter, not rookie anymore. And Gil Wright was promoted to captain, his first was actually effective in October, just got those pictures together. And we have not forgotten about the fire department information service, and he hasn't been delayed again until his kids are in the back. His son is a firefighter captain, so a great captain. And like I said, we're trying to make the department heads up to visit with you and get you all some face time, so we'll ask deputy police chief, police chief, if they would like to appear, they look, shut up, come on now.
I'm not gonna get the speeding ticket on the way over there.
Let's see how this goes.
Honored to be here, here with deputy chief Matt Fitcher. I'm happy to talk about everything, our activity training report, to have a couple of things here, just to kind of let you know what we've been up to. We're gearing up for a re-accreditation, we're running probably less than twenty law enforcement agencies out of four hundred in the state of Oklahoma that are fully accredited through the State Chiefs Association. So the team of accrediters will come out in April, pour through all of our policies, look at our supporting documentation, right along with our officers, doing a lot of our property winning, which is a high liability area, and just ensure that we, again, still meet the high standards. There are about a hundred and eighty standards, by the way, that we need to meet and have that for the last twenty years, so. Our manpower, we're working hard to get full staff, which is a challenge, kind of a critical crisis in America, actually. I think back in the day, we did thirty or forty or fifty applicants for every one position, now it's a twenty and ten, now we had an opening a long ago, and we have two applicants. One of them actually left and took a job with another department. But we've got one applicant that we're doing background process on, he's looking really good. We've got a couple that have just come out of field training, one more, hopefully we'll make it out in the next couple of weeks. It's just quite a process, we hope everything continues to work, because it can take eight months to a year from the time that we advertise until an officer's out as a solo police officer. So that's quite a challenge. You're familiar with CIT, Critical Incident Team, that's advanced mental health training that police officers across the country attend. It's incredible, particularly as our homeless and mental health costs continue to increase. The state legislature did entertain a little bit of legislation requiring police departments to have at least ten or twenty percent of their police officers CIT accredited, which of course wasn't good enough for us, we are now one hundred percent fully certified for all of our police officers. With the exception of the guys that are just now getting out of their team, everyone else are maybe on down, eventually advanced training, and we're proud of that. Community policing is important to us every single day, we're all off any pickup at just about every school in the village, there's a village police officer there. It's greeting parents, staff, children. We have sent our officer to daycare school, and now has entered this program, Santa Uptown. Handle with Care is a program that if our police officers come into contact with school-aged children, you can send that child's name to Handle with Care email address, nothing else. And what Oklahoma City Public Schools will do is find out where that children, that child goes to school, alert the teachers and staff, the police have dealt with them. Either somebody was arrested for D five, three o'clock in the morning, the police were in the living room, went to, people yelling. The schools just thought, why are we getting on to someone that's sleeping or mistreating? Is it possible that the child got no sleep? The parents were dealing with the police, so we're sensitive to that, and we participate in that program just by letting the schools know the children that we come into contact with. We're gearing up for our next Citizens Police Academy, got a few seats left, a few people here at a tent, that is incredible outreach. Eight weeks long, fun, free, hands-on training that we provide. At least a dozen of our police officers will let you dust the fingerprints. I mean, we'll just do everything we can, we have scenario training, it's just incredible, if you're interested, please get with me. But we do need a few more applicants to really justify putting that on, so.
I'm definitely joining in September.
Okay, thank you, love to see you.
We went through time, we need to stress that, it's only a few clocks left.
Yeah.
It's well worth your time, I mean, well worth your time, probably the best class I've ever been in.
And I might have missed that, you're talking about the police, the citizen.
Yes, ma'am, yeah. And if we can put it together, we're all close, next Thursday's when we'll start, eight weeks every Thursday from six thirty to eight thirty. We love Special Olympics, fourteen of our personnel will be recently out at Hurricane Harbor, and we jumped into about four degree water. Try to raise awareness and running for Special Olympics, precious athletes and their families. We'll probably have another softball game with the fire department here in a few months, we read that.
You're actually planning that.
I think that needs to be on the application. Our bicycle patrol program is pretty valuable to us, although it's been less than what we think it can be, we just had a meeting today, we're trying to revamp that, so hopefully we'll see more officers out on bicycles and special events in neighborhoods, Cassidy Square. So we hope to have that in hand soon. Fortunately, council approved license plate recognition cameras for us last year, we saw those at Redmond Town. We get about thirty-five thousand reads per day, and we use those regularly in investigations. People, seven eleven, there's been people go up there and rock them, metal arsonists, a big help, it's just a forceful requirement. So you may see requests for those in the future. We've got some scenario-based training coming up in a couple of weeks, incredible training. We know that the closer we can get to subjecting our officers to drama, the better off they're gonna be on the street. So we're gonna be at Metro Tech's multi-million dollar shoot house here in a couple of weeks, putting our officers through shoot, don't shoot, de-escalation training. We talked to other agencies, and they're pretty jealous about it, but that's important to help us exercise restraint and make the best decisions possible. So proud of that. Does anyone have any questions about our activity or training, or anything I've talked about, or in a hurry, we'll be around after the meeting. If you have any questions, we'll have the answer.
Do you have the, to sign up for the Citizens Police Academy, you have applications?
I can sure make those out here in about two minutes. Yeah, we'd love to see you, if you have to miss one, not a big deal, life happens, but we just appreciate anyone that lives or works or commutes through the village that has an interest in what we do, how we're trained, why we do it, we wanna be transparent, and it's just a great opportunity that for us to get to know you better.
I'll just say, give you a whole lot of appreciation for the police department.
And we thought we knew a lot, you know, anyway.
I do have one question, the program that you were mentioning about the notification.
Yes, ma'am.
What's the name of that?
Handle with Care. And the emails, like handlewithcare@oklahomacitypublicschool.org, that, yeah, it's very.
So that's something that's in place for other or arches, is something good?
It's throughout the Oklahoma City Public School system. So Oklahoma City, definitely, if you got Oklahoma City Public School on your jurisdiction court, are handling school-aged children that you think might benefit from it. We just, sometimes we don't even ask, we just, if where someone's living, and at three o'clock in the morning, and they're yelling, and maybe someone's going to jail, and we can get the name of the child, we just send that in, and that's about it. They don't ask us questions, they just know, handle that child with care, give them a little bit of grace.
I'm actually a former DAS candidate, so I used to do intent for those situations, actually. And so I am so thrilled to hear that, because those were some of the sleepless nights that I would have in pertaining to these children. And it means a recidivism for the child in acting out such, so this is wonderful to hear, it's a beautiful, thank you, bringing that to our attention.
I just want to say, I appreciate your sincere intention about training. I've noticed that over the years, that we do a better than the department. It starts with you, and how important it is to you.
Thank you, needs a lot of me, I'm a lifelong learner, myself. You, I think, met someone connected to LIDA, law enforcement executive, the Oklahoma Association years ago, that to me. Several of us have attended, that is incredible, training is expensive, but there's probably eight or nine or ten that are in homes or ten more that.
I would, I would make a pledge, really, if we could save all of the council, spend all the money you want.
Exactly.
Sorry, guys, yeah.
This is on.
You too, guys. The last time I seen you go off, I realized, oh, the Luttrells come from the police, so I feel like it goes very far. I just, my point is, I always enjoy listening to what your needs are, and you've always always had a training. You guys always have a need, it's really on that, but you've just done excellent job on that. They are jobs a little easier, if you're not in a lot of training, you guys are.
Yeah, but you will see us in the future about tangible capital improvements, but nothing's more important than people that we can put on the street and interact and help people solve problems. Dave has done a phenomenal job, our training budget before he was here was minimal, it has increased significantly, I lack of another smaller increase, but thanks to him, it has allowed us to do a lot, I'm grateful for that.
Dave, take all the money you want.
Well, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Okay, councilman Cummins. Seven fifteen, I'm gonna give that one, now you're gonna be talking about it, yeah. Tell them, we just, we need. I'm gonna go ahead and give you another council.
First thing I want to mention, I want to thank you, Sean, for the celebration with Kathy. I was very impressed, everybody had a wonderful time, I heard all kinds of stories about a lot of members of her family and your family that I didn't know. And it was a great way to start out using, you're right, you are right. It was a great way to use our facilities that we hadn't used before. And everybody had fun, and I just want to commend you more, and, you know, we miss Kathy, but it was really a nice thing to do, we really appreciate it. And I also wanted to mention the donations you've been taking for Kathy's, helping the students' debts, if the students.
Student blood debt, not student debt.
You're right, I did have the right, correct. And I'm amazed, remember the generous generosity of people donating, it's pretty great. And I love the posts, when I find like, how much money you're giving to this little school or that little school, and it's just, it's a Jordan thing, you know, and we love it, we really appreciate it, so, thank you. And it's funny, John, you handed me the microphone, because my turn, I listened to the last, since I was absent from the last council meeting. And I tried to listen, I turned up my computer, and my husband had the TV on, and it was impossible to follow. I did the agenda, and I written it out, so. agenda, and I had written it out so I could follow what you were talking about, I was trying to, but it was impossible, I don't, I know our mic system is not that old, but it's not holding up, or at least for the, there were seventy other people when I was on, showed how many people were on, I couldn't understand anything at all.
That's great, me too.
And then, I'm up here in the vendor, and they have their homeowners association here last August, and they were using their trapeze mics, my mom came over here and worked on the set, and they still had trouble, we got problems with the mics, and I, I shouldn't be, they should be able to warn me or something.
If I can, if I can jump in here as well, a sound of thousands in this room, terrible, I, a couple of our mics were not working the last meeting, a lot of, even when I sit out there, I can't understand anything I could say, so it's, it's not unique, that was when we had the old lights. And we need some soundproof.
Some soundproofing, okay, whatever we take is-
I'll bring that up at the next council at the first meeting. Put all the money on it. Somebody says, absolutely.
But they do have a good stand, that's awesome.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you, sorry for asking over you.
Good evening, everyone, I would like to say, I'll go from bad to, we're having, I don't know, I've been kind of noticing, we're having a bit of an illegal dumping situation, and I'm sure it was going on long before I was elected to office in the village, but of course now that I'm being contacted directly about it, it makes a bit of a difference, and make sure those are things, but I, as, as a citizen of the village, if you see someone doing in the act of dumping things that, you know, public trash can, they're not their trash, I mean, in a business retail trash can, those retail dumpsters in the particular area that we have a major problem with, it is now, well, thanks to Dave and whoever did it, there's no longer a couch, an ottoman, a TV sitting next to this dumpster, and the neighbors are letting me know about it. I did notice after that one, and being notified about it, I saw some tires up all of a sudden next to that tire and so forth, so if you see it, what is the saying goes, see something, say something, you know, you can call, I would say the non-emergency number, or at least call, I think it was Code Force that the day was directing me toward, I will make sure, start keeping like little notification numbers that I can reference to persons that reach out to me directly, so that was number one, because that is, I was very surprised to see, and I guess I just didn't notice, you know, I just didn't notice before if it was happening, so anyway, if you see it, please help us with that. Number two, thanks again to the police department about everything that they shared, that touched me deep, you know, I have a colleague PTSD, but working for DHS is not a small feat, it was an experience that I probably could have lived a lifetime without knowing how some of our fellow citizens of Oklahoma live, and that those things are happening right under our mouths, and we think our lives are so bad, and then you see how a child has to experience it in homes that don't have enough in means or whatever, and so I really, I'm gonna look into that over, because that just sounds amazing. And number three, it is women's history, and I can't think of anything other than the number one woman in history for me right now, and it would be Kathy Cummings, she was someone that made me feel important the very first time that I stepped foot into these chambers, and I wasn't necessarily her constituent or anything, but she was so lovely and so open and so positive, she gave me the idea in my head that I, I didn't think about one at that time, but when I did decide one, I believed I could because of someone like her, and so in women's history, I did want to reference that she meant something to me, we got to talk, the last conversation I had with her in person was when I was out campaigning, and she told me how proud of me she was. Sorry. And my daughter was with me, my daughter was with me, so we got to experience that together, and she got to meet my, you know, told my daughter how happy she was to see that she did it back okay, because Kathy was in here at the time, I believe, when my daughter had her degrees, to study abroad, and so Kathy took a picture of her, I had to get a copy of that from the paper, but I honor her today, thank you.
Sure. Yeah. Well, I have a few little things to say, thank you. So yeah, tonight is my last meeting, I don't think I have anything to pile on to you, Dave, on my way out of here, I'm leaving the April meeting, I'll swing back in May, and now that I know this-
Just a heck.
Just a heck. He's great, you and Kathy looking out, boys, shut up, not a talk. But, you know, sincere best wishes for the four running in here, takes a lot to step up and get off the worst, and get some of the good comments and some of the bad comments, and we're making a lot of good, but it happens, but it's just, it's been an honor to sit up here, probably for a year, and you, Sean, I remember calling you, saying I'm scared as hell that you're running, I guess we're gonna do this, so let's talk about it, now I've enjoyed every mission brought to this, I can say this thing about Dave, if they were here, then I'm here, me for nine years, Dave's been on council how long?
Too long.
I remember being, being a little younger up there with them, and they took them with me, and helped me figure this thing out, and I'm like, shut up. Please, to you and Jeff, and like extended plus, they have learned so much sitting here with you guys. You have incredible city attorney, city attorneys, we wouldn't have been able to do anything if it wasn't for everybody on the council working together, the minds, we have sitting up here representing us, Bruce, who was in here to help guide us, and then your office land is playing, take off none of the ways, but God, I have these challenges, horses, and everybody, it's been fun, I can't really understand that, but I've enjoyed it immensely, and I just know it's time, and so we're towards the next chapter for the city, and whatever combo we afford, who's doing something in one way or the other, it's only happened here, so take off and do it, Jay, I'll say the last comment, no, I won't say the last comment, you'll be one of the last, but, you know, you've been so kind and nice, and you're every time, I appreciate it, Carol, I'll never forget you from the first, you've been at every meeting I think I've been at, so Jay's missed a few, if you have. I don't, Dave, I don't know if you were, maybe you were regular at their back then too?
Back when they were getting off my nerves is when I started coming.
Because I've been changing, I suppose, you've been here since my first meeting, so back when I used to do it till midnight.
You're kind of-
I know, it's one point, anyway, I'll see you around here, but I just want to tell you guys, everybody in the room, everybody in the city, thank you, it's an honor, a privilege, and I look forward to seeing where you guys take it from here, so thank you. And keep this moving, I don't really have any time, I do want to say, thank you chief for the security of the box, and everything on the party, city was fantastic from, from Myersburg on down, everybody in the office, really and truly, those, those big events are hard to put along, and they require a lot of legit space, thank you everybody for everything, do we have any new business, we need this service? Nope, seven thirty.